Everyone, I'd like to welcome you here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission on what hopefully is the last gray day of a long stretch of gray days. And it looks like my phone app says the sun's coming out tomorrow, so I'm excited about that. I hope everyone had a great weekend. Before we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to give a shout out to Sheriff Milstead. Last week, we celebrated 23 years of him as being sheriff of Minnehaha County.
Wow.
And that's a lot of years of service in a really difficult, stressful job, and I just want to thank him. I also want to give him a belated birthday. He was wise enough to start his job here with Minnehaha County on his birthday, so he gets to celebrate twice. With that, we'll go ahead and open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
All right, so, meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Hiberger. Just a reminder to silence your cellphone. And Craig or Carol are here this morning if you need a listening device. With that, I'd consider a motion to amend the agenda to move items 6A to 6 and 6A to 8 to take place after 6C 2.
That's my motion.
A motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item would be to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item would be to approve the commission meeting minutes for May 12, 2020.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $6,502,553.29.
Pay the bills.
Motion and a second, any comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Oh, technical difficulties here, thank you. Next item is reports, there's several reports there I'd recommend for approval. We have the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds statement, the Minnehaha County Coroner report, and financial update on property tax collection and COVID expenses, so, thank you. Next item are personnel actions, I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, so that takes us to abatements recommended for approval. We've got quite a list of abatements here this morning, good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chris Lilly, Equalization. Yeah, we've got quite a few abatements here this morning, I'll just jump right into them. The first batch, which is 6A, we do have a, did you announce the correction on item 27 and 28?
You amended the agenda, yeah.
All right, so, 6A, item one is for parcel number 70888, Veterans' Exemption for 2019 in the amount of $1,528.57. Parcel number 77942, again Veterans' Exemption for 2019 in the amount of $1,277.30. Parcel number three, or item number three, parcel number 21291, Veterans' Exemption for 2019 in the amount of $1,572.32. Parcel 87359, Veterans' Exemption for 2019 in the amount of $35.39. Parcel number 68839, Veterans' Exemption for 2017, property taxes for $154.04. Same parcel, but for 2018 year, property tax in the amount of $1,843.90. Same parcel number, but for the 2019 year, property tax in the amount of $1,838.07. Then we move on to item eight. Parcel number 83902, Veterans' Exemption for 2019, property tax in the amount of $524.31. Parcel number 51632, Veterans' Exemption for 2019, property tax in the amount of $1,277.31. Item 10, parcel number 71557, Veterans' Exemption for 2018 in the amount of $128.08. Same parcel number, 71557, for the 2019 year, for $1,528.57. Item 12, parcel number 54801, Veterans' Exemption for 2019, property tax for $102.75. Item 13, parcel number 57749, Veterans' Exemption for 2019 in the amount of $1,328.66. Item 14, parcel number 89106, Veterans' Exemption for 2019, property tax in the amount of $1,912.52. Item 15, parcel number 56803, Veterans' Exemption for 2019, property tax in the amount of $896.20. Item 16, parcel number 82982, Veterans' Exemption for 2019 in the amount of $921.86. Item 17, parcel number 31286, Veterans' Exemption for 2019 in the amount of $896.21. Item 18, parcel number 91410, Veterans' Exemption for 2019, property tax in the amount of $1,528.56. Item 19, parcel number 49341, Veterans' Exemption for 2017 in the amount of $1,653.11. Same parcel number, 49341, for 2018 year, in the amount of $1,658.80. Same parcel number for the 2019 year, in the amount of $1,528.57. Moving on to item 22, is parcel number 42686, Veterans' Exemption for 2019 in the amount of $1,026.30. Item number 23, parcel number 88580, Veterans' Exemption for 2018 in the amount of $760.21. Item 24 is for the same parcel, for the 2019 year, in the amount of $1,528.56. Item 25 is parcel number 55626, Veterans' Exemption for 2018 in the amount of $159.87. Item 26 is for the same parcel, but for the 2019 tax year.
Chris?
Yep.
I'm sorry, the amendment that we received was to amend the agenda to move item 26 and item 28?
Should be 27 and 28.
Okay, so, I need some help about whether we need to amend the agenda again to consider this appropriately?
You can reconsider the motion back here. So, if you want to have Chris perhaps finish reading what he's doing, and then consider a motion to amend the original motion on amendment of the agenda. Because you can reconsider that now, to make a choice. So, if you could just have Chris correctly state to the record what the motion should be as far as the order of those items.
Before he finishes here.
Yep.
Madam Chair, having listened to this from home a couple times, I think when we're not at a microphone, it's difficult to understand what's being said, say, from the state attorney. So maybe you could restate what her suggestion was, so people that are listening at home can, or else we could ask her to come to the podium.
I can go ahead and restate it. So, the issue here is that we had an incorrect amendment to the agenda, and we need to correct the amendment to the agenda so that we can appropriately handle the item of business here with respect to abatements recommended for approval. And so, I interrupted Chris as he was starting to talk about item 26, but before we go back to that, what I would like to do is have a motion to amend the agenda to move items 6A to 7 and 6A to 8 to take place after item 6C 2. Is there somebody willing to make that motion?
Sure. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, so now I would take a motion to amend the newly amended agenda.
Motion to approve the newly amended agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, so Chris, you get to go back and read item 26 for us.
Item 26, parcel number 55626, Veterans' Exemption for 2019 in the amount of $1,528.56. And then I will skip the previous 27 and 28, we're going to move right to item 29, which is parcel number 48401, Surviving Spouse Veterans' Exemption for 2019 in the amount of $1,528.57. Again, all of these, I've discussed these over multiple meetings, these are veterans that have qualified for the 100% permanent total disabled. Depending on the timing of when the VA approves those, sometimes we go by their approval date, so all of these have been verified and the tax is calculated accordingly, and I'm asking for recommendation on these parcels.
Any questions for Chris?
Move.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve all of the amended list.
Second.
Motion and second, Commissioner Hiberger?
Just had a question, Chris. We've had so many of these in the last couple months, any reason why we've had a rush on Veterans' exemptions?
A couple of things. One is, a lot of times when they come in and make applications, we can't process them. I mean, if they came in today and they received their letter today, they will actually be approved for the 2020 Pay 21. We can't do anything until the taxes come available. Now, we're getting a little bit farther in the year, a lot of these have sat there and we've been waiting until we got things feathered out and got values feathered out and all of that to get a true calculations. Other ones are, the veterans, the VA, I think, has become a little more liberal with their giving of permanent and total disabilities, which I don't think is a bad thing. I think, as I discussed with Jason just a little bit ago, I think the policy of the VA in past was deny, 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 until you can't deny any longer. Now they're finding, they're opening up a little bit more and finding a lot more cause for this permanent total. And then they're going back and backdating these corrections, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth?
Inasmuch as we just had Memorial Day, I'm really happy to hear that finally some of these people are getting the benefit without the harassment. Thank you.
All right, anything else? We had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Yeah, roll call vote.
Hiberger? Hi. Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you, Maggie. All right, that takes us to item 6B.
All right, item 6B, are some abatements that are recommended for approval. Item one is parcel number 88668 for 2019, the property tax amount of $2,870.53. Item number two is parcel number 54423 for 2019, property tax in the amount of $1,318.82. Item three is for parcel number 47135 for 2019, property tax in the amount of $19.66. Item four is parcel number 50616, 2019 property tax in the amount of $1,885.22. Item five is parcel number 88142 for the 2019 property tax in the amount of $9,354.49. These ones here have a multitude of differences, they aren't all standard, like the veteran, if you'd like me to go through those, I certainly can.
Questions? Commissioner Barth?
I would just ask about the Augustana one.
Yep, the Augustana parcel, that's one that they had that was, again, I think we had one of these prior, that was taxable, and they had some damage to them due to the storm that had occurred, and now they have decided in the reparations of that, that it is no longer going to be a rental, it's going to be used more for their educational purposes. So they have requested and made application for 2020 Pay 21 in the exempt amount and from that date, then
Thank you.
we're abating.
Any other questions? If not, it entertain a motion.
Motion to approve 6B items 1 through 5.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and it takes us to item 6C. We have items 1, 2, and then 26, or 27, 28 that were moved down below.
Yep, so, item 6C now then is some abatements that we are recommending for denial. The first one is parcel number 90945 for the 2019 amount, the amount they requested was Item 2 was for parcel 91423 for the 2019 property tax amount. That one we knew way early on, so we didn't even calculate taxes on that one, we figured out after they made their abatement request, and I can cover that a little bit. Then we're going to jump to the item 27, which is parcel number 84271. Again, this one was a Veterans' exemption for 2019, the amount they requested was $1,528.57. Item 28, which was moved down, parcel number 62973, again Veterans' exemption for 2019, they requested $765.73. All of these we are recommending for denial. Item number one was a property that, let me just double check here, wasn't fully assessed and they'd requested an abatement to calculate as owner occupied, but they were ineligible due to the house not being fully completed at that time. So again, whenever somebody makes a request, we can't stop them, we have to process their request, and then we research it, and obviously, we've accepted their request, we have to process it, we're recommending denial, they weren't eligible to receive the owner occupied as the house wasn't complete, they already got that reduction with that percentage. The second one, again, for parcel 91423, this one here, this gentleman thought there was a big mix-up due to some replating and things like that, called me, I worked with him on the phone. At the time, I kind of believed that he was probably right, he requested the abatement, we sent out the form, literally five minutes later, I had it back, filled out, notarized, and then we had worked through it and discovered that there was not an error, and I reached back out to the gentleman and walked him through all of the plating and the combining that had occurred and that our information was true and accurate. So he said to pull his abatement, but I can't, that's why we discovered it so fast, we didn't even calculate taxes on it. Then item number 27, this is one again that requested an abatement due to believing they were permanently and totally disabled, but we have confirmed that they were paid at 100%, but unfortunately, were not rated permanent and total at that time, so we're recommending denial. The other one also was the 100% permanent total, they requested, we processed it, and then we discovered that they did not own the property as of the legal assessment date, so they're basically a year ahead, so, we are asking for denial on all of those.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I certainly would support denying all of them except for perhaps 84271. Does it have to be 100% disabled permanently?
Yes.
What if they're only disabled for the next, 100% for the next 20 years?
That's the difference, that's the VA. They can be paid at 100% from the VA, but if they're not rated permanent and total, there's no recourse for them in the state law. It has to be permanent and total. And that's some of the catchy ones in that we've dealt with, with the staff in the past, when we receive the app, they look on there and see they're paid at 100%, and then they have them do the abatement forms, well then we discover they're paid at 100%, but they're not rated permanent and total yet. Meaning, whatever their payment is, and I've ran into several individuals like that where they've had something going on with them, one individual in particular had cancer, he was paid at 100%, they went in and did the surgery, and they reduced him back to 70% then, it wasn't permanent and total, they'd remedied it at the time. So they're, until they rate that, there's nothing, there's no proration for veterans, it's all or nothing.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Karski?
Is state statute pretty specific that it has to be
Permanent and total?
Permanent and total?
Yep.
Other questions? Motion to approve?
Second.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I don't want to deny that 184271, so at this point, my only choice would be to vote against all of them.
We'll go ahead and do a roll call on each individual one.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'd take a motion on the first one, parcel number 90945.
Move to deny.
I don't think that's the one you want to deny, is it?
No, it's the 90.
I'm going to do each individual parcel, so we can be clear here.
Right, and I was looking at number 27, and the
Yep, but we're doing the first one, under 6C.
Right.
Which is parcel number 90945.
It'd be my motion to deny that abatement.
Second.
I'm sorry, the motion was what?
To deny that.
To deny it, okay, I'm sorry. Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next one would be on parcel number 91423.
Point of order.
Yes.
Are we approving, not denying?
Yes, no, we are approving, denying.
We're approving, denying, because my motion was to deny these.
It's like math.
Picked up too, that's what happened to me, sorry.
Good. Two times minus one.
I make a motion to deny 91423.
Second.
Motion and
A second, roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
So the next one would be parcel number 84271.
Motion to deny.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
No.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes 4 to 1. And then the last one would be parcel number 62973.
Motion to deny.
Second.
And a second, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, hopefully our lists get a little shorter.
Thank you. All right, so, item seven, requests and notices, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, David Heinhold's first reading and authorized the auditor to publish notice of hearing on June 23, 2020 for rezone 20-02.
Good morning, County Commission, David Heinhold, County Planning Department, rezoning 20-02 is to rezone from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District, this is a first reading. The property is located just south of the intersection of South Dakota State Highway 115 and County Highway 122, as you can see, the property is outlined in red. This intersection is commonly referred to as the Midway Corner, this is where there's a convenience store located just to the north and a gas station as well, and there's also an automobile repair shop that's just located to the east of the gas station along the county highway. And then as you can see in the surrounding area, Raven Industries is located with the blue rooftops there, right next adjacent to the subject property. The total acreage of the property is 1.29 acres, is currently a residential property, and there's a house there on the site. The public hearing was held by the Planning Commission on May 18th, a map has been provided to you as well as the minutes from that meeting. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this item, and today, action should be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice of a public hearing on an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County, will be held on June 23, 2020, at or after 9:00 AM, at a meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. And I'd answer any questions if you have them.
Questions this morning? Commissioner Karski?
Is the home being torn down? Is that the intent, do we know?
The applicant listed that it'd be for future development, so
I was just wondering about the housing eligibility, is that transferred then to adjacent property? Where does that go?
The building eligibility would go away, so if it was rezoned to commercial, then there would be no more building eligibility.
Really? Okay.
Commissioner?
But that doesn't mean they have to remove the house.
No.
At this point, the house is there, but if they tear it down, they can't build a new one on that site.
They can't build one there, but I didn't know if it was transferable, is what I was concerned.
They wouldn't be able to build a new house if it was rezoned to commercial.
Other questions? Good questions? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Madam Chair, before David leaves, I'm going to just hold him there for a sec. We had another issue at our planning and zoning meeting where the neighbor was concerned about traffic that was being diverted towards his house by Google Maps, and where they had to turn around in his driveway, and it was a problem. Anyway, David contacted Google, and they've changed that direction in their mapping system.
Thank you.
It's actually pretty easy, I didn't know there was a feedback button on Google Maps.
Good to know. All right, thank you. All right, item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none, so that takes us to opportunity for public comment. And we have one distinguished speaker here with us this morning.
Could I enter?
Yes, absolutely, Commissioner Karski.
I'm the liaison to the Minnehaha County Economic Development Board, and we had a change in the direction, or not in direction, but leadership of the board here at the beginning of the year, and a new hire, and that's the individual who is probably familiar to most of you, excuse me, Jesse Fonkert, and I asked Jesse if he would come and introduce and maybe give us some idea of what we're going to see in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chair, Commissioners, thanks for having me here today, really appreciate it. It was about four years ago, I was here as the Chamber Economic Development Director for the city of Hartford, I spent four years there. I'm honored to be in this position as the Executive Director of both Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties Economic Development Associations, as I interned there when I was in college. It truly is a testament to the programs that the foundation do in trying to get folks from college and high school into industry positions to help prepare them for the future. And so, I feel humbled to be in this position, and I really look forward to working with you, your staff, and also the Lincoln County Commission as we further the economic interest of this region. We just approved a task force at our last board meeting to look into the structure of our organization. Makita was formed nearly 30 years ago, and it's time for us to just examine what we're doing, how we're doing it, and look for ways to improve with the assets at our disposal. Economic development isn't as simple anymore as finding somebody to put in a request and place a building somewhere, everything now comes down to data, and as prospects are looking at sites, it's more competitive than ever before. And so, as the business development realm has changed, so must we look into ways of doing things that can help our members and investors thrive. And so, they'll be starting that process here in June, it'll be finishing up in October. It's been an interesting time to start a job, I started on April 1st, it's kind of been the big joke, so to speak. But you know, I've been impressed with our municipalities and counties and public bodies and how they've adjusted to this crazy period. I think what we've been able to do in, what, 60 days, to prepare ourselves, to make sure that operations continue as normal, is pretty fantastic to look into. I hope to be here at least once or twice a year, and I do read your minutes and check your agenda every Monday. If there's anything you want me to be at, please have Mr. Dewey or Carol reach out to me, I'd be happy to speak on any item you think would be appropriate. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take them now, or if not, please feel free to reach out to me via cellphone or email.
Any questions for Jesse? Commissioner Barth?
I just, I've heard that Tesla is looking for a new location, so, throwing that out there.
It is funny you say that, because Mr. Musk likes to tweet, and so, when I was working hard, we tweeted back at him saying, we'll give him some free land if he comes out to Hartford or Minnehaha County. But you know, more and more, I think, as this area develops, will be looked at. And so, we're really fortunate to have great partners at the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, and prospects don't fit in our towns, we work with them, and vice versa.
Thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you, Chair.
Congratulations on your new job, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comment this morning? All right, seeing none, takes us to regular business, first item is a brief presentation on the State's Attorney's Office. I believe Crystal Johnson is going to be here this morning. I see people looking out in the hallway, as we're trying to do all this social distancing, it's a little more difficult, because we have people stacked in the hallways. Good morning.
Good morning, I was in the carryover room. Good morning, I'm Crystal Johnson, I'm the State's Attorney here for Minnehaha County. I wanted to just kind of give you a brief overview of our office in the last year, it's been quite the year for the State's Attorney's Office. One of the main things that we've implemented within the last month is we've reorganized our felony attorneys. What we've done is we've taken our felony attorneys and we've divided them into three specializations. We have a narcotics unit, we have a persons unit, and we have a property crimes unit. What we're hoping that this will do will allow us to be more efficient and more consistent in handling of the cases.[1793.54] When cases come in, sometimes they can cover the full caseload, but what, or the full rambit of whether it's a DWI with a stolen vehicle and then they have meth in their pocket. But what we're trying to focus in is on the main purpose of law enforcement contact. And then it gets assigned to one of the attorneys in that division. We have eight attorneys in our narcotics unit because that is probably, in a non-COVID-related year, it's probably 60% of our crime. We have four attorneys that do property crimes or financial crimes, and then we have four attorneys who do the persons crimes. When those cases then get assigned to the unit, it then allows them to have more of a kind of a teamwork-based effort. In particular, in our narcotics cases, we've redesigned how we are prosecuting them. We are now going to be assigning them per judge, which allows then attorneys to have certain weeks of the fact they know they're going to potentially have a trial, but also potentially have two weeks where they're not going to have trial. We're hoping that this will give us a chance to be more efficient and more consistent with our resolution of cases because defense attorneys know they'll only be dealing with, if it's a person crime, you're going to have one of four attorneys assigned to the case. If it's a drug crime, ideally, they have more consistent and reasonable, or not necessarily reasonable efforts, but uniform efforts in trying to resolve those cases so that people are treated the same when they come in with very similar fact scenarios. One of the other things that has developed within the last year is our mental health court has also taken off. I think we started that at the beginning of the year where we started opening that up to participants for a specialty court. Mental health court focuses on people whose underlying main cause is mental health or mental illness. It isn't people who have substance abuse, which has subsequently caused them to have a mental illness. But it is those whose underlying cause is mental illness, that it's not being treated properly. They decide to self-medicate whatever it might be that then leads them to criminal behavior. And so then they get a specialty court's team focused in on them and their individual needs, helps them, encourages them to be consistent with their treatment, their medication. And then ideally, if they are following their proper medication, they don't commit any more crimes. And so ultimately, are always, one of our underlying goals is that we don't want our first-time offenders to just become repeat offenders in the system. And so if we can address that underlying issue with some of them, they become functioning, full members of society that we don't end up seeing again. Of course, COVID has been the underlying cause of everything or underlying basis of everything. As I was looking through the calendar of when you guys had department heads coming in to speak to you, I imagine the ones that came in in February had a very different perception of things than those of us that are here in May. What COVID has done, it has slowed down our courthouse and our courthouse functionings. We have not had jury trials in what will be three months by the time we start again. We're going to start again on June 15th. We're going to take the plunge, trying to see if we can get jury trials going again. That gives us about three months that we haven't been doing trials and three months of additional and increased caseload. When we get ready for those trials, we're going to be implementing safety features by allowing or having sanitary wipes and hand sanitizer for all the jurors, allowing the jurors to be spread out in the courtroom. Typically, jurors sit in the jury box. What we'll do is the courthouse intends on spreading them out in the jury box and as well as into the gallery. Evidence will be that which has to most likely be projected so people aren't having to touch exhibits. There will be occasions where we'll have actual exhibits that they have to touch, or at least if they want to touch them, they can, whether it's a physical piece of drug paraphernalia or something along those lines. But it gives us an opportunity to get that started again. June 15th will be the trial run, and we'll see how that goes, and we'll see how jurors are responsive to it with COVID restrictions and all of the cross-section of people. As you see, there's, people treat it very, very seriously. Some of them don't. And that will also be our jury pool, are those that are our cross-section, and so it'll be interesting to see how they all deal with those. So with jury trials starting up June 15th, us not having had jury trials for three months, the summer is going to be an interesting time for us. I think we're going to be, we're going to feel the pressure of three months of no jury trials. I know the attorneys are kind of bracing for the storm of cases that are going to be coming in and ready to go, and I think everybody's anxious to get them started and anxious to start clearing up some of those that have been sitting there for three months when we haven't been able to try them. The other daunting thing that, of course, that COVID has done is that it has increased our caseload. We have not had a decrease in crime. Our numbers for this year relative to last year is we're up about 200 cases. From January 1st to May 22nd of 2019, we were at 45, or just approximately 4,500 cases. This year now, we are almost at 4,700 cases. What really makes that heavy, though, is that our assault cases are up 150. Last year, we had 773 assaults, which includes domestic assaults and non-domestic assaults. This year, we're at 920. And so we are facing kind of a heavier burden, and we've seen a lot on the news of some rather serious offenses that have happened in the last couple months. We've had juveniles that have been committing very serious offenses. A couple of those juveniles, we have direct filed into adult court based on the offenses that they've occurred. One of which was just off of, he was actually on DOC supervision at the time that he committed the offense. So we're dealing with some very serious offenses, some by relatively young people in our community. And so that is also an additional burden on our office. The one thing, when I was looking at facts and stats from last year to this year, probably the most shocking one is our digital discovery technicians. Last year, you funded two additional people. Looking at our numbers this year, we are incredibly grateful that we got those two additional people. Last year, at this time of year, we had downloaded approximately 67,000 videos. I believe for the year, we had been at 379,000 for the year of 2019. Up until this point of 2020, we're at 296,000. So our numbers are up 230,000 from last year to this year. And when I was talking to our digital discovery technicians, I asked them, "Well, what's causing this increase?" Phone downloads tends to be one of the biggest reasons. Everybody has a cellphone. Cellphones carry an immense amount of information, just even down to location information, that if you're on Wi-Fi, it's picking up where you're located. And that is, can be at times, very incredible information and evidence in a case. But also, our sheriff's office has went to the same recording system that our police department uses, which is called GTEC. That's doubling and tripling some of that discovery as well, some of those videos. We're getting more videos from every time a law enforcement officer is out on a scene. So our digital discovery technician, so last year, when you funded those two positions, it ends up being very great foresight because this year, we're feeling that burden.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barre.
I just wonder if you could explain digital discovery. A lot of the people watching our program may not have any idea what that is. They may think they're looking up YouTube or something. But have, explain it so that the civilians can understand it, and I do appreciate you being here.
So every time that a police officer, all of our police cars, some of our police officers carry the body cameras. All of our police cars with the Sioux Falls Police Department, as well as the sheriff's office, and as well as all the interview rooms at the police department are recorded. And so if you have an interaction with law enforcement, if law enforcement pulls you over for a DWI, they have a cam, they have a system in their car, it used to be a camcorder. They have a system in their car that will record the interaction with law enforcement, both sight and sound recorded. And so when somebody gets arrested for a DWI, that officer has a videotape of that interaction of what's going on. And so when we talk about the digital discovery, it is providing that video that law enforcement obtains to defense attorneys, to the attorneys in our office, that we are able to see and view that interaction at the time. What law enforcement is saying to them, how a defendant is behaving, how they are behaving. Another thing we're really noticing is lots of people now have self, or recording systems at their home, whether it's their Ring camera, whatever it might be. And if law enforcement is investigating the type of case that has that type of interaction, they will obtain those surveillance videos from the home. If law enforcement obtains it and we are prosecuting that case, we are obligated to provide that to defense because it is part of the discovery process. Whether it shows if the defendant is guilty or not, or doesn't show anything, we are obligated to provide that to the defense. When I talk about phone downloads, law enforcement, and really anybody's able to obtain information from a cellphone, and that is something also then. If we are prosecuting a case, we are obligated by law to provide that information to the defense, whether he's represented by an attorney or not, if they request it.
Sorry to interrupt, but.
Nope, that's okay. And so what our office, I think when we put into place the reorganization, we did it about a month ago, so when we were kind of in the midst of the COVID pandemic and dealing with social distancing and a decrease in in court appearances, I think has kind of inspired a little bit of excitement in the office. It allows, as I talked about previously, allows the attorneys to specialize. And when I asked about reorganization, I asked where they wanted to go, to give them, to allow them some input. Some attorneys have had specialties for years, but have always kind of, you always got assigned other cases. But it allows us also then to specialize in resolutions to the case. Our property crimes attorneys are looking at ways to resolve cases that are unique and different. One thing I have learned is that LSS offers budget counseling. And so whether we require a defendant who may be forged a bunch of checks, owes somebody a bunch of money, requiring them to get LSS budget counseling. And LSS tells us if we get people into the programs, they're able to offer the programs more often. And I think sometimes it's just very basic skills that allow them just to see when they might have a restitution plan, and maybe that restitution plan is daunting because it's $10,000. Or our sculpture walk, which is going to be in excess of $150,000. It allows them then to see that sometimes in smaller parcels, and it's easier to take little bites of that as opposed to looking at the whole picture of it. One of the other things COVID has done when we were, what feels like forever ago, back in March, when we were dealing with the reorganization of the bond schedule. So we, it allowed our jail to have less contact with people, so we were bringing less people into the jail, lowering than the potential risk for them, is we authorized PR bonds on personal recognizance bonds, which allowed people to get booked into jail and then be released from jail before they went in front of a judge. One of the consequences we're seeing from that is our failure to appear. Our failure to appear is in April, we're about 60%. And so if we had 100 cases scheduled, about 40 of those people were showing up. So one of the things we'll have to deal with when we're through this, or at least through what probably is going to be the peak of it, is working with the sheriff's office and dealing with those warrants that are going to be outstanding in those cases that we're not able to address yet because the people didn't show up for court. We're also dealing then with some of the people who might get a PR bond, get released from jail, two hours later are doing something very similar. So we, I think we're very innovative when we were dealing with this in the midst of the pandemic, but I think there's going to be very real repercussions that we're going to have to clean our way out of, and it's going to take some time. And so when I talk about the reorganization, I think it's going to take us a year to kind of see where we're at, where we might have holes, where it's working, where it might not be working. And so it'll be interesting to see how that plays out once we're kind of through this backlog of jury trials that we have, to see how it truly works out. And I'm hopeful that it will streamline things and make things a little more efficient.
Questions? State's Attorney? Commissioner Barre.
Well, Madam State's Attorney, thank you so much for being here, and I just know that when you took over the job, that the office had been under a cloud for some time, but the cloud left when you got there. And by shining the light on operations and working with your staff, who never gave up working, that your staff certainly was not responsible for any of the problems that were there previously. But I think you've done a great job, and I hope you can continue in it for a while.
Thank you. It's been a challenge. It's been a different role for me, but I would agree the cloud has lifted. I've always been a firm believer in leading by example, and that I wouldn't ask anybody to do something I wouldn't do myself. And so I'm there if they need me, courtroom coverage, whatever it might be. But I think we're doing well, even considering the pandemic of fear of an unknown. We don't know who's going to catch it, or where they're going to catch it, or how it's going to affect them. They have kept their head down and they have worked hard, but they also worked hard for the last however many years that they show up and work hard, and I'm glad that the cloud has finally been lifted.
Commissioner Karski first, and then Commissioner Heiburger.
Three months, nobody's been on jury duty. The parking's been pretty easy down here on Tuesday mornings. I hope we have a parking plan because it's going to get pretty crazy out there. I really have not had a lot of interaction with your office, but I have been the liaison to the public defender for going on four years. And one of the, and I'm not going to pretend to speak for the public defender, but the continuous thing that I've heard over time is consistency, consistency in charging so that the public defender could have an idea of who they're working with. And from what I hear you saying, I think we're going to have that change. So to me, that's exciting because it'll make the public defender's job a whole lot more, I don't want to say easier, but at least consistent. And being able to work with the same individuals, knowing their thought processes, how to negotiate with them and that type of thing. I'm excited to hear about what you've done.
I absolutely agree, and I would say the same thing about working with the defense attorneys. Sometimes you end up figuring out kind of their nuances, and I really hope it's beneficial. It's not just beneficial for our office. It'll be beneficial for law enforcement because they will have a directed group of people to talk to on a certain case with a certain issue, as well as the defense. That they're going to know the nuances and the habits of certain prosecutors, and the prosecutors are going to know the same thing about the defense attorneys.
Commissioner Heiburger.
How many employees are you director over? So how many, how many in your whole department, and that would include attorneys and?
59. There are 59. That includes legal office assistant, our digital discovery, our paralegals, the attorneys. We have a juvenile diversion coordinator. I forgot to mention, we're applying for a grant for an adult diversion coordinator as well, but there's 59 staff members.
It's a lot of people to herd.
It is. It is.
Lawyers, they're so easy to manage, too, so.
Yep.
Any other questions? Commissioner Benega.
In reference to your digital study, if you will, and the update of the numbers, how are you going to be able to manage that significant growth? I mean, it's, percentage-wise, it's incredible.
We have, well, we have, we're staffed at four digital discovery technicians right now. Another one will be starting the beginning of August. He retires from the police department as a sergeant in July, and he'll be coming in in August. He's already going to know the GTEC system, the video discovery system. They have not told me yet that they are overburdened and dying yet, so I'm going to assume we're just, much like managing, if it's not a problem, if you don't hear it, I assume it's not a problem. We've also applied for some drug funds from the Attorney General's Office. He granted us drug funds, which allowed us to reorganize our office space for them so that they can fit five people in there. We put up Plexiglas, so there's social distancing in there, and we also got another computer, which will allow them to do some more video edits. So I think we're, I'll say it today, I don't know, maybe tomorrow will be a different story, but I think we are staffed adequately in that situation right now, that they have their system that they can download and share quickly and efficiently.
Obviously, that's an important part of the whole process, and with those staggering increases and a delay in getting people to court, where the door is open if you need to have somebody help solve some of that problem, because we don't want a huge backlog if we don't have to have.
No, and I know that even with the decrease in people coming to court, what we did during the last couple months is they ran a split shift. So we have one that was always here during the day, and then we had one come in about 6:00 p.m. at night, and then worked kind of the night shift. And so they have been proactive in the cases, even if they haven't shown up to court, even if we have a warrant out for their arrest. They've been proactive in trying to get those videos and discovery done now, knowing at some point they were going to have to do it either way.
And the last thing I'll say is your management experience and your ability to make changes to make all this work is amazing because frankly, we've all experienced history, and we've had feedback from staff that we've never seen in a long time. we've had feedback from staff that we've never seen in a long time. So thank you for everything you've done to make that right.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Other questions? I just would like to say I am the liaison for the State's Attorney's Office, so I've had an opportunity to visit a few times with Crystal, had an opportunity to go over her budget, which was a new experience for her, and which I would have to say she did very well on. She's been very conservative. I think a lot of her reorganization is going to prove fruitful, not only in administration, in the law enforcement, in the criminal justice system, but is very cost-effective for the county. And I think she's only asking for one legal office assistant position this year, which is a dramatic change from what we've seen in the past, so I really appreciate that as well.
Like I said, I would like to get a chance to see how the reorganization works before we have to decide if we need any more people. Like I said, I hope it's just a more efficient way for us to work, and I don't want to ask for people that we don't necessarily have room for or don't desperately need at this point.
Anything else? All right, thank you so much. Thanks for coming down today. Next presentation is on emergency management. Another busy guy, Jason Gierman, good morning.
Good morning. Jason Gierman, Minnehaw County Emergency Management. I've been doing this for about two years now, experienced a lot of different things, learned a lot in two years, with two floods, two disaster declarations associated with those floods, several tornadoes, and now a pandemic. So what's next? I don't know. When I heard about the murder hornets down south, it was kind of alarming, but also kind of funny. But, next slide. Do I have that here? Can I just do it here? Obviously, here we go. Part of the thing that emergency management does is organizes the volunteer groups. There's approximately 50 police reserves. They provide extra patrol, special events, they assist the local law enforcement, and also they have to, they have a command structure, just like the police department, with captains, lieutenants, sergeants, and line officers, and they donate quite a bit of time during the year. We did have a class going, a new recruit class going, until the COVID fell on our laps, and now we canceled that, but we were hoping to start that up maybe in the fall again and continue that. They did get quite a few hours in during the class time, but we decided it was just the best way to just stop the class and continue that in the fall. Oh, there, when I Googled "emergency management," this is what kind of came up, is Jeff Barth. And this is a pre-COVID photo, because there's no mask on.
I was sick when they took that picture.
There's a, he's my rural fire and ambulance liaison, because that's another function of emergency management. Jeff has been great and attends a lot of those meetings and helps me out with that. Obviously, rural fire has kind of canceled their meetings. We've done some of the Zoom meetings, but they've been kind of on their own and communicating back and forth. I've been trying to get them the equipment they need. They've been pretty self-sufficient through all these things, and they've had to change a lot of policies and procedures to make their life easier, and they've been doing a great job and following the guidelines that are there. Ambulance, same way. They've, their whole system has been changed due to this, and they've been using more PPE. And in general, they've been able to self-sustain through their own vendors, where we really haven't had to rely a lot on the state for the PPE with the COVID situation. So we intend to start the meetings back up, and when, maybe in a few weeks, we'll get back to having regular meetings, and if so, then we'll use the Zoom, and I think that's going to be a norm from now on, is maybe the remote meetings if people can't make it.
Thank goodness.
We'll get rid of that one there. Rescue squad, another part of emergency management. This is of value to the rural fire, because they go out and help them with situations, traffic control, and they refill their air tanks. The system you're looking there is called the BART, and I can't remember what the acronym, but it's a rescue truck that has a cascade system that they go out and help rural fire, and they fill air tanks. They have extra equipment in their form, extra tanks, and I know the rural fire is really appreciative of that. One of their big duties has been water rescue the last couple of years. We haven't had a lot of water rescues this year because no flooding, but last year they were really busy in that aspect of things. Dive team, we haven't had to use them, thank God, much this year, but they'd helped to do evidence recovery. They've found some items for the Sioux Falls Police Department in the river. It was a weapon. They do train quite regularly, and it's a very organized group. And I actually went out to Wall Lake with them this year and watched them do an ice dive, which was very interesting. There was one slide that must not have shown up, but I'll kind of cover things with the other emergency management services here. So another thing is grant management. Emergency management obviously takes care of the Homeland Security Grant, which basically supplies equipment to different agencies in the county, Sioux Falls Police, Fire, the Sheriff's Office, you know, Metro, things like that. Disaster preparedness, obviously that's one of the big ones in disaster management resources. My kids ask me what an emergency manager does. At the time, I was in the sheriff's office, I really didn't know either, but my best description to them is, you know, I try to bring the right people to the table to solve a problem. I may bring the people to the table and then step back and not be involved, or I may have to be involved. That's my quick version of an emergency manager. And, you know, we've been dealing with this COVID situation, and it's taken a lot of people and a lot of different resources and organizations, especially when you're dealing with multi-hospitals, nursing homes, different emergency managers, you know, the issues that you guys have had here with how to adjust your personnel and staffing, you know, every county's had that, and I know they've looked to this county for leadership on that and kind of followed suit, but, and I know this is on your agenda about the, you know, the ordinance or the, I can't remember what it's, the-
Resolution.
The resolution today, but you got to remember that this whole issue with the COVID was let's keep the hospitals from being overwhelmed. And, you know, the last few weeks, the measure that they've really used is how many people are in the hospital with COVID, and it stayed pretty steady. Now, testing becomes an issue, and you hear, oh my God, there's a rise in COVID in Alabama, Arkansas, or wherever, but that's because they maybe started to do more testing, more pinpointed testing for, like when they did with Smithfield, we saw a rise. So you got to take that into effect also, that that's an issue, and they're going to start testing more nursing homes, so I'm, you know, there's a possibility that we may see a little spike. However, easing the restrictions is appropriate now. I know Sioux Falls is looking at it also, and the small towns are looking at Sioux Falls to see what they will do also. Couple other things, quickly, damage assessments, that's been a big issue with all the destruction with the floods and the tornadoes. And FEMA's been in Sioux Falls for, you know, close to a year. They did leave town now because of the COVID, they kind of distance themselves, but I'm assuming they'll be ramping back up as things get back to normal, especially with the damage with the tornado that hit Sioux Falls. Severe weather right now, that's another thing that emergency management kind of is a liaison with the National Weather Service. I work with Regan Smith, as he's kind of the tornado siren guy for Sioux Falls. And between myself and Doug and Regan, when some, when weather starts to get a little scary, one of us goes to the National Weather Service, one of us might be out and about, and one of us will be at Metro to kind of coordinate, coordinate those efforts. We're always looking for volunteers. Just want the media to know that. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm sure I missed something, but ask away.
Questions for Jason? Commissioner Barrie?
Jason, to get on the dive team, do you have to have previous experience as a Navy SEAL or something?
No. Nope, you have to pass some tests, and what I've done now is, so if you have no experience as a diver and you want to be on the dive team, you meet the other divers, they go through every, the details with you, and then you can go get your certification. If you pass your certification, I can reimburse you for that. And then as you take classes, in the past, they've paid for the classes, but I switched that, so you pay upfront. If you pass, I will reimburse it, because there's some people that haven't passed and we're out the money, so that's what I've done. There's a pretty solid group of divers right now. I'm not in desperate need of any, and basically are all trained up.
Madam Chair, following up on that, we have a scholarship program for EMTs as well, right?
We did, actually-
Is that unfunded now?
We did a EMR class. There was, my predecessor had put away some money for certain classes, and we had an EMR class of, I think, 10 people, and that's just a step below EMT. And the county paid for all that, and they all passed, they all got their license, and hopefully they will go to the next step, which would be an EMT. We were looking at doing another class, however, the COVID situation arose, and we haven't went down that road yet.
Jason, I'm wondering if you could just give an update on the Emergency Operations Center? I know that's been a big part of your existence over the last couple of months, and just let the commissioners know the status of that group.
So the Emergency Operations Center, EOC, we call it, you know, obviously that has, has been a key part of the decision-making that's been going on, and the information that I send to Commissioner Bender and to the rest of the community. It was, you know, obviously there was a big group of people in there, but right now, with things going back to normal, it's shrinking, but that's part of the incident command system. It can easily be expanded again if necessary. We're looking at, I think, tomorrow or the next day, moving it to the Health Department and just having a few people involved instead of the large number that are in there now, and then have maybe regular Zoom meetings with the people that need to be at the table.
So does that mean that they're, that it's all over, and we don't need to worry about this anymore?
Oh, no, no, you know, again, the hospitals are fine, but once you start to open things up, you know, the media has been focused on this also, and especially in the national news, where you saw over the weekend about the big parties going on. They expect another surge, but the thing is, is we measure it by what the hospital beds are, and how many people are in the hospital with COVID. That's the best way to look at this now, and the hospitals think that they can maintain and not have, not run out, at least in the Sioux Falls area. So we, I think people around here are going to still do a little social distancing on their own, they're going to police themselves. There's going to be the people that don't, because I get calls still that nobody believes that this is, you know, a government conspiracy or something like that, that, you know, we want to go back to normal immediately. But this phased back-to-normal also helps us measure. If the peaks start to go up and we're phasing out and back to normal too fast, maybe we need to step back a little bit and slow things down. But the hospitals are confident that they can handle this right now.
So the hospitalization rate has actually been lower than it was originally projected. The people who are experiencing COVID aren't utilizing hospital beds at the rate they originally predicting. That's part of what has happened.
Yeah, they predicted that the people that would, that get COVID would, you know, the percentage would be much higher, that would have to be hospitalized, but that hasn't been the case.
So and I know around here, we're talking about not necessarily getting back to normal, but getting back to whatever our new normal is, because the CDC is still recommending that we continue to practice this social distancing guidance that they've given us kind of from the beginning. I mean, and that we still expect that a lot of people will get COVID, it's just that we think that the hospitals are in a position now that they can handle those that will need hospitalization.
Right, and the good thing is, you know, one of the problems that we really dealt with was, especially for the towns outside of Sioux Falls, one of the, I guess, one of the miscommunications, if that's the way to put it, was that the city of Sioux Falls knows where all these cases are, but it was a hotspot, so why doesn't Crooks get to know, or Del Rapids get to know? Well, that wasn't the case. You know, we found out in Sioux Falls, just like everybody else found out from the State Department of Health. So, you know, in the future, I think we need to figure out a better way to make that communication more quickly, so these cities outside of Sioux Falls can make their decisions based on the facts and the data in their area. Whether that be reporting by a ZIP code, I don't know, but that's something that we have to look at in the future.
Madam Chair, I-
Commissioner Barrie.
In regards to what Jason just said, I've been in touch with a city councilman from a smaller town in Minnehaw County, that his citizens were saying, you know, we don't have it here, why do we need to worry? And they couldn't find out if they had it, I mean, if there was a case in that community. And it's just part of the nature of things. Meanwhile, we know what nursing home has it, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, the reporting out of information has been very frustrating at times. It's gotten reported out just generally in a, on a county-level basis. A lot of the times when you found out specifically about places, it was because the organization themselves were reporting it out. So, you know, I mean, I think even it's interesting having your presentation right after the State's Attorney's Office, because, you know, we've been trying to manage the whole health aspect of this, the medical side of it, make sure that the hospitals have had enough beds. But as the State's Attorney pointed out, and as we knew, as we made decisions along the way, every decision we made had potential to slow the spread of COVID, so we could manage and make sure we had enough PPE and hospital beds, and the hospitals were ready to handle it. But we also knew that they, every decision would have other consequences, would have, you know, social consequences, and, you know, some of the rise of domestic abuse and assaults, I think, can be traced back to some of these restrictions that we've encouraged people to follow. There have been obviously huge economic consequences to this whole thing. And so the struggle is, is to balance all of that, as we try to move back into a new normal, to try to make sure we do protect those people that are at risk in the way that we behave, each of us, in our exercise of our own personal responsibility, but that we do also respect the consequences that people have been dealing with psychologically, socially, and economically. So, well, we appreciate all the hard work that you and the EOC did to help get us through the last two and a half months, and we recognize that you will still continue to be working and monitoring that, and we'll continue to look to you as a resource for us as we try to make wise decisions going forward.
Thanks for your support, too. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, then on a related note, we have Carol Muller here to introduce a resolution to rescind our existing resolution, MC 20-29, regarding public health and declare an emergency. As we've stated in the past, that declaring the emergency is necessary language, so that we can have any action we take today take effect immediately.
Thank you, Commissioners, Carol Muller, Minnehaw County Commission Office. In the past, you've had some resolutions that have come before you that have discussed establishments, that we'll use that term in a very broad-based, broad-based description, but for, but for resolution, but for those establishments, to look at the number of people that they have in their place of business. Today, before you, is a consideration to rescind Resolution 20-29, which you passed on May 6th, removing restrictions on public gatherings, establishments, and public, I put the word "public gatherings" in that twice, didn't I, in the action requested, but to remove those restrictions that are out there. And I can just jump down to maybe the bottom of that resolution, which really gets to the heart of what this is. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, that within Minnehaw County and outside of the exterior boundaries of an incorporated municipality, Resolution 20-29 titled a resolution to address a public health crisis pertaining to coronavirus and to declare an emergency is rescinded. Minnehaw County encourages the public to be diligent in their behavior, to slow the spread of the virus, and to protect individuals who may be vulnerable to serious complications or death. Businesses, establishments, events, and public gatherings should follow the South- the South Dakota Department of Health and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention Guidelines and Best Practices for COVID-19 to protect the health and safety of their employees and patrons. And this resolution is hereby deemed necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. And as an emergency measure, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon approval. And that emergency language is the exact same as you've seen in every other resolution to date so far about COVID.
All right. Questions? Comments? No, I just think there's just been a tremendous amount of confusion out there about, you know, where we are now. I think there's been confusion all of the way along this process as to where we are, and obviously there's some differences of opinion out there. But I think when we passed the resolution that we're rescinding today, we said that that was a first step in trying to get back to what our new normal is gonna be. And I just kind of want to reiterate that we know that there are people that are still at risk here, and we don't want to minimize that. We don't want to minimize a lot of the heartache that a lot of families have experienced over the last two and a half months, as people have lost loved ones here. But we do have to figure out a way to operate this, you know, all the experts at least seem to agree that this is likely to be with us for, you know, another 12 to 18 months, as we look to try to get some sort of vaccine for it. And so we have to figure out a way to operate here. And we, so we still encourage people that are, particularly those at risk, to stay home. If you're sick, please stay home. But businesses need to get back to business, and this is, you know, an opportunity for us to just encourage people to continue to watch the CDC. They provide a guidance all the time. They list, they provided a very extensive publication just last Friday that's very specific to certain different types of businesses, and give a lot of guidance as to how to reopen those businesses in a way that would be safe. And that's, that's what I think we're trying to encourage people here to do as well. We're obviously, none of us epidemiologists or scientists, and so we ask people to look to the experts and behave responsibly. Commissioner Heiburger?
Just one comment, that as we pass this resolution, it hasn't opened up the administration building completely. If you want to just address that-
Sure, absolutely. That's a good point.
-because the courthouse is different than the administration building, and I also wonder if sometimes that's been confused. We had a 60% no-show at court, and people don't always understand that court, the courthouse and the administration building are two different places, so maybe a draw.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I did have a note, and I had overlooked that. So the courthouse, which is actually basically controlled, owned by us, but basically controlled by the state in the unified judicial system, has been open this entire time, has never been closed. They have their own set of rules. I mean, you are required to wear masks for that building. But our buildings, our particular administration building here, where the public does a lot of business with the Treasurer's Office and the Auditor's Office, has been closed to the public, except for a few appointments, by appointment-only meetings. The voting, the absentee voting is actually taking place across the street in the Extension Building. We have elected to not open the building this week to the public, because we have the primary election next Tuesday, which is a really very heavy lift for our Auditor's Office and things. And to, in order to give them as much room to operate here and not add the confusion of trying to reopen with the public, we're gonna open the building to the public next Wednesday, which is June 3rd. And there will, you'll notice, there'll be a lot of new signage. There'll be a lot of social distancing. We're actually going to have markings on the floor to try to keep people separated and queuing up in lines apart from each other. We're gonna have, we're actually hiring somebody for a few weeks through the end of June to help with that traffic flow and help people kind of learn some new patterns of behavior, which is always challenging for all of us. But the courthouse is, has their own separate rules, and they have been open this whole time. So, thank you. Commissioner Baris?
When we first passed the resolution we're rescinding today, we made the best decision we could with the information we had. And it was not a draconian edict that, you know, on penalty of, you know, crucifixion or something, you'd better shut down. But I think it actually has worked. And I think, you know, this is also a time where we're using the best information we have. And we did the right thing then. We're doing the right thing now. And I do believe our citizens are more acutely aware of the issues of person-to-person contact and where the disease could be lurking. And I think we're doing the right thing today also.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So that takes us to Item 13, which is a brief on the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program Grant. We have Michelle Boyd and Erin Serska. It's our lucky day. Good morning.
Good morning. Michelle Boyd with the Sheriff's Office. If you recall, we were in front of you on May 12th requesting permission to apply for this grant. The Sheriff's Office has applied for the grant on May 20th, and it's a grant through the U.S. Department of Justice and the Bureau of Justice Assistance. The purpose of it is to provide financial and technical assistance to state units of local government and Indian tribal government to develop, implement, and expand comprehensive efforts to identify, respond to, treat, and support those affected by illicit opioid stimulants and other drugs of abuse. Some of the strategies that we came up with here locally to try to fill some of the gaps that we've identified are the case coordinator at the state's attorney's office that Crystal Johnson just spoke about, the Adult Diversion Program. They're currently doing a juvenile diversion program that's going well. And so we hope to be able to do something similar with the adult program with people who are just getting started early on in their addiction and coming into the criminal justice system to try to provide them some services, some wraparound services to hopefully not see them down the road and to help some of our jail incarceration numbers. Our, we'll also be looking to hire a part-time human service alliance caseworker, work with some transitional housing, also work with the Native American community for some cultural services, and also provide a peer recovery support position that'll work closely with the Triage Center. The aim is to develop some of these things locally. Law enforcement finds that they don't have a lot of options when they come in contact with people, and so we're hoping to provide more options rather than just incarcerating individuals. And so we have partnered with a number of people in the community, a number of businesses in the community. We've gotten their letters of support for this grant submission. We have letters of support from presiding Judge Hellman, from Chief Matt Burns with the Sioux Falls Police Department, with Crystal Johnson at the state's attorney's office, Carrie Benz at Health and Human Services, the president and CEO of Avera, Dave Flechek, also with the executive director of Urban Indian Health, Don Lee, and Erin Serska's group with the University of South Dakota School of Medicine. They've helped do the big lift in applying for this grant. There's a lot that goes into this. It's a three-year grant with a $900,000 award at the end of it, hopefully. We should hear in September, and generally, the spending of this grant would begin in October. Are there any questions for me? Otherwise, Erin is here as well, if you have any questions for her.
Questions? I, we really appreciate you coming here. I mean, I think this is exciting. This is an opportunity to really move the dial on some of the folks that are struggling in our criminal justice system. Just want to confirm, you don't need, you don't need anything approved by the commission today?
No, we came in front of you a couple of weeks ago, just so we could submit the application, since the deadline was the week that you did not have a commission meeting. If there are some concerns, we obviously can pull that application. That's kind of why we're here in front of you, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Nobody has any further questions. We'll move forward with it and hear later the end of this year. Oh, I'm sorry. Good thing Erin's here. We do need a motion.
So it's listed as a brief, and I, this is just me asking again, is there, is there a problem for us to have a, take action on this, since it's listed on the agenda as a briefing?
It was on the agenda, I think, that it's procedurally okay for the, for to take action.
Okay, perfect. That's what I would have thought, but I thought I'd better double-check.
Good thing you did.
So-
What are we approving?
We are approving the application for the grant that was described here today.
We didn't do that on May 12th.
No, it was, it was a timing issue, because by the time they realized it, because we didn't have a board meeting at that, on the next Tuesday, and that, they weren't able to make their deadline. So really, we're approving the fact that they submitted it. If we did not approve it, they would retract the application that's already been submitted.
Move approval.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any further comments? Just to be clear, I'm gonna let Olivia do a roll call vote.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming this morning. All right. That takes us to Item 14, which should authorize the chair to sign change order number one for Project MC 17-01, Highway 146 Reconstruction. Jacob, good morning. How are you?
Good morning. Jacob Mars with the County Highway Department. Construction is underway as, as it is spring outside. We've been, we've been keeping busy at the highway department. This change order is for the Highway 146 Reconstruct. There's a couple of items on here. The contractor proposed to use new gravel instead of recycling the existing asphalt out there, incorporating it with the existing gravel and placing it. He found that it would be more cost-effective to remove it all, since they're really close to the quarry that they're using for gravel, and just put down new base course. So for that, we were able to have a cost savings overall, because we're able to minimize the amount of section that we need for our roadway, according to our geotech experts, because the, the new aggregate has a higher structural value than the recycled aggregate does. So there are, if you look at the actual change order, there's several different items where we had the recycle unclassified base course and then, and then placing it all back in. So all of those items together are what we originally had planned, and the contractor is just now planning on using unclassified and, and base course to put it all back together. Another item on here is the salvaging topsoil. That's a number that we had to adjust once we got into the field, realized that it wasn't in the plans properly. So the consultant had to redo his numbers and, and put those, put that cubic yards back in. And then two more additional items are the, the grove clearing and the, the type-two temporary fence. And those are quantities that just changed in the field according to site conditions. So they're, they're updated quantities in here.
Lot going on in this change order. Are there questions for Jacob? Commissioner Karski?
So if I'm following the numbers, we're saving $538,000 by not salvaging the, what we're taking off, but we're paying $577,000 for new. But because we're reclaiming the topsoil or salvaging the topsoil, we're saving another $140,000, which came at the recommendation of the contractor. So we got a lot, there's a lot going on there, basically.
Sure. So if you look at Items, Items 2, which is salvaged stockpile asphalt mix and granular base material, and then Item 6, which is base course salvaged asphalt mix, the combination of those two numbers in parentheses-
Oh.
-that's what the, that's what the savings is, is that $790-
Whatever those two are together.
Yeah, yeah. That, that number is what the savings is. And then the additional costs are Items 3, unclassified excavation, unclassified excavation, Item 4, base course. That's what it costs to put down the-
Gotcha.
-the new base course. Yep.
So overall, we're saving $68,404, right?
Right, yeah. If we didn't have that additional $139,701 in there for the salvaged topsoil, it would be a savings of $100,000, $200,000.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Commissioner Heiburger?
On a big project like this, $68,000 is a big deal, so.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Big job. Good job. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Did you want to say anything else, Jacob?
No, thi, this is a, it's a big construction project. There's lots of moving pieces. I expect we're gonna have another, another change order here in the future, which we'll, we'll brief you on and, and move forward through it together. We were hoping to have it combined with this one, but just timing-wise, it didn't, it didn't quite work out.
Is that one going to be a savings also?
It will not be, no.
Great. So we had a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Takes us to Item 15, which is to consider a motion to approve two 2020 to 2021 malt beverage and wine licensing renewal applications. Olivia?
Thank you. Olivia Larson, Auditor's Office. We received two of our renewal applications just a little late, which is why we're looking at them today. It's Wall Lake Oil Company and then MAS LLC, which is the Riviera by Rocco's. So both of these are just your standard renewals. They didn't have any violations in the licensing year, so I'm just looking for a motion to approve.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to Item 16, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between the Tegra Group, Inc. and Minnehaha for owner's representation services for the renovation of the administration and extension buildings. Craig Dewey?
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. You are familiar with Tegra. They have provided, provided owner's rep services for the jail expansion project, which has helped it move forward in an exceedingly effective and efficient way. And as the county considers renovations to the administration building as well as the extension building, Tegra is offering to provide services to help the county reach certain design milestones, which will really help determine a more refined and hopefully accurate budget estimate as you would consider bonding options to pay for those costs. So this agreement has been negotiated by Commissioner Bender and reviewed by outside counsel, Jim Widerich. The county would pay a fixed fee of $93,000. That would be broken up in installments in $15,500 per month. And the changes that Jim Widerich recommended for this agreement have been incorporated into it. Would certainly be happy to answer any questions that you would have, but would respectfully ask for your approval of this agreement.
Questions for Craig? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Olivia, I just want to confirm, there's no roll call vote required here? Okay. Motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Takes us to Item 17, which is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement between the Tegra Group and Minnehaha County for owner's representation services in the new construction of the highway building.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office again. Similar to the administration and extension building contract, the highway contract would provide similar services regarding design and obtaining different project estimates for various parts of the process. The total value of this contract would be a total fixed fee of $185,700, paid in installments of $12,750 per month for the first six months, and then $8,400 per month for the following 13 months. There was an extra zero accidentally added to the $8,400 in the memo. So again, services are similar for this contract compared to the highway, or rather, compared to the administration and extension contract. Would be happy to answer any questions and would request your approval, please.
Any questions? Commissioner Baris?
So are we expecting to have this completed in 19 months?
When you talk about-
Six months plus 13 months is 19. Are we expecting to have this project completed in 19 months, or?
We don't have a final date yet for when construction would be completed, but in conversation with Dick Strasberg, it would be anticipated that ground would be able to be broken in the spring of next year.
So is that when we would commence paying Tegra, or do we start next week?
So we would start here in the month of May, as Tegra is helping with-
Okay.
-move forward with that planning process.
That's kind of what I was wondering.
Other questions? Now I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to Item 18, which is a brief on the 2021 legislative priorities. Craig?
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office again. In 2017, collaboration started to take place in a way- to take place in a way to develop a shared set of legislative priorities. That collaboration was between Minnehaha County, the city of Sioux Falls, and surrounding municipalities from both Minnehaha and Lincoln County. And that has been a very fruitful dialogue in focusing on the areas where we do have things that are in common. Each entity is certainly free to pursue other legislative goals that would be separate from this collaborative group. But we've also found that as this process has continued each year, that legislators have responded favorably to that collaboration between the local governmental entities. And so this is really to give you an update that the process is again continuing for 2021. And the first meeting has been set. Commissioners Bender and Heiburger, you have received a calendar appointment this morning for next week on Friday, June 5, is when we'll be holding our first meeting. And we'll be discussing those different priorities as I indicated. As always each year, there are multiple meetings where these discussions take place. The previous priorities from the previous year stay on unless the group decides as a whole by consensus that an item needs to be removed. The group is also very judicious about making sure that we don't add too many priorities so that the forests or the trees get lost in the whole forest. And so an example of what went forward last year was provided in addition to this memo. I would be happy to answer any other questions about the process, though. Before I open it up for questions, I would like to indicate department heads have been asked this year to look at what some different legislative priorities would be. And we have received some input from department heads, specifically, I believe Commissioner Heiburger. We, you and I both received feedback from Tracy Smith, the public defender, about pursuing some state funding for certain types of defender positions. I don't know if you want to talk about this general process overall, given that you're the, also the president of SDACC and you have heard what's going on in other areas of the state, too.
Yep. And in the past, every year, we have talked as a board of commissioners if there was anything this commission wanted to pursue. And so that was part of the reason for having this on the agenda today. If you had anything, we are looking to department heads. I think that one that we will be pursuing again this next year is the alcohol tax that we pursued this year. We actually got some traction. But with that, needs to continue to be education of our legislators. There were questions during the legislative session as to what our funding looked like and what our expenses were. And so I have encouraged the office to invite all the legislators to our budget hearings. They are, I think, televised and, or will be, I think, this year. And so an invitation going out early so that they at least put it on their calendar to hopefully start to listen to some of these things. And we've tried to figure out ways to educate them, whether it's over coffee, which we don't know if we'll be having yet, or whether they're through phone calls with the commissioners and trying to educate them on what we're doing. I had several questions when I was in the legislature this last year about what are we doing to reduce our jail population? Well, we're doing a lot. But I don't think people always understand completely what we're doing. And so that is part of our job to educate our legislators. And I think some of them are open to that opportunity. The SDACC will be looking at any, we have to have our resolutions. If we have new ones submitted to them before or by July 31, I believe the date is-
July 30.
July 30 at 5 o'clock. And so that, that would go to them and then eventually go to the state association for approval by them. Just because they don't approve something doesn't mean we can't bring it forward. But it has to be in their bylaws or in their resolutions in order, not bylaws, their resolutions in order for them to actively support what we're doing. So.
And as Commissioner Heiburger did mention, once this collaborative group gets done discussing what the consensus priorities would be, you as a commission would vote as an entire body on what the county's official legislative priorities would be, not only considering what this local government group decided on consensus, but that would be an opportunity also to consider, as Commissioner Heiburger indicated, if Minnehaha County would draft a specific resolution to put forward to SDACC regarding our priority for Minnehaha County.
Commissioner Heiburger?
We found that it was really beneficial to work with the municipal league on some of our actions, although there were things that they, that the city decided to do that we decided not to do. And so they are too separate, even though we have found a lot of collaboration and it was actually very good to work with them last year. So.
Commissioner Barth?
I really appreciate this effort. I, I've got to say that while I don't know that I would support actually doing some of these things, I think giving us the latitude to do them is an important factor. And I think that there, there should be more items on this list. And I'll, I'll try to work on a couple. But to what Commissioner Heiburger was just commenting on jail occupancy, they passed a law, was it Senate Bill 70 that one year, which was going to reward counties for reducing their numbers of people in jail? We had already taken the steps. And so other counties got paid hundreds of thousands of dollars for complying with the new law. We had already complied with the new law and we got nothing. That's the way it works.
Other thoughts for Craig this morning?
I would note right now, I don't believe that there is a, a plan to broadcast publicly our budget meetings. They will be recorded and they're available for county officials who are going to participate remotely. Folks are obviously welcome to come here, but I just wanted to clarify that. So I think we're going to follow the same process we used last year. So-
As long as we let them know.
Yep. Anything else? All right. We'll be sure to give any thoughts or feedback to Craig. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
All right. That takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
I attended the CCOG E-Board meeting and Lynn Keller Forbes is applying for a $400,000 grant, which could be used on a number of things, most of which are not related to housing or feeding people or testing for virus. And she's interested in, in finding other things related to this disaster that we have that the money could be spent on. And I have suggested that we look at enhancing our remote participation capability. I know Gerald and I have some experience sitting at home and watching the, whatever's on the screen and listening. But I think that there are a lot of things, we could not see the board sitting here, for example. And I think that would have been helpful. I know you could see Gerald and me sitting there in our tuxedos. But the, I think the experience can be enhanced. And I know that in our last planning and zoning meeting, which kudos to David again for running a great meeting using the computer, but we actually had citizens logged in on the screen who testified against the project that, for that gun range. Anyway, I thought it was great to have them there instead of here. And certainly, if they went on for 30 minutes rambling along, whoever's running the meeting could cut them off a little bit more easily. But it, it's not that I want to cut them off. But the fact is, I think that there are some things we can do to enhance our electronic capability to operate remotely.
All right. I agree. There's a lot more we could do. Commissioner Heiburger?
I'll jump on that just a little bit. The courts had mentioned this last week that they were having difficulty because a few people had resigned or whatever as far as court reporters. And they'll be looking, it's the UJS, not us, because I did ask, are we responsible? But looking at, there's technology out there to do court reporting-
Right.
-by IT or whatever you want to say. So they'll be looking at those as they've, but it is, it is a stress. If you don't have a court reporter, how do you have court?
And Madam Chair, Lynn Keller Forbes is looking for ideas. So Cindy, I think that's the kind of thing she'd be looking for.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else? Any other liaison reports?
I just, I know a lot of us have been meeting with our liaisons on budgeting. Next month is our budgeting month. And so a lot of good information that I know folks I've been visiting with are going to bring forward and always look forward to budgeting. So that takes us to item 20, new business. Any new business? Any old business?
I got some old business.
Mr. Karski, I could tell you're ready to jump on something.
You're not talking about us, are you?
Actually, no. Myself. 36 years ago today, I married a saint. I know she's a saint because she put up with me for 36 years. Took her off the farm, moved her across the country three times, across the state of South Dakota. And God has blessed us with three children and to date, three grandchildren. So I just want to acknowledge 36 years. So-
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Worth acknowledging. Thank you. Congratulations.
There's no song we can sing about that, though, I don't think.
Happy anniversary to you.
Thank you.
The other business? Carol?
Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, you guys talked a little bit about budget hearings and you go into those next month. For people listening, I just want to remind about schedule. Next week is June 2. And there will not be a commission meeting next Tuesday because we're all going to be very busy with elections that are taking place. We will meet back again on June 9. And then budget hearings are June 15, 16, 29, and 30. You have those all on your calendars. And we'll look forward to a busy June moving ahead.
Thank you for the reminder that there is no meeting next week. So, all right. Anything else? Any other old business? If not, I would consider a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
adjourn.
Motion and a second. Do we need a roll call for that? Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone.